Solo after eight, call to order for the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees Special Meeting, Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. Call to order and roll call, please.
David?
Here.
Harold?
Randy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following discussion work session on fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
So today we're going to go through, and you guys tell me how you want to do this. I figured we would go through each individual line to see if you have any questions, kind of tell you exactly how, how the city money works. I know the board resolution will become before the board in June, and it will adopt the budget by department level. So I break down the budget along with, my manager's here, we do it by line item, but the board adopts it department level. So if, say, vehicle maintenance is running over and they've got money still like in office supplies, just because they use more than once in vehicle maintenance, as long as in that whole department, then you have not spent all their money, they're not doing anything illegal. So, because the board adopts it by department level. So, because if we did it by line item, then it would be, it would be nightmarish.
Yeah, it'd be a little, a bit.
But, but I have them go by, by line item to give them a guide.
Okay. So today are we seeing line item or?
We're going to do line item today. Yes, because to me, you guys need to see, if you have any questions, well, why are we spending this much money in capital, you know, in contractual services? I have a document up here that I can pull up, and it will tell me exactly what we spent this year in contractual services, whether it was a computer program for the police department, or fire programs for the fire department, or, I mean, just different things like that, in case you guys have questions on why we spend so much money in that, in that area. One of them dip on.
There's only one.
Hopefully, I can pull one of the pages there. Yeah. So. We will start with. Do you have a couple? This is my first time to present on this thing, so this is a, this is a sample of the resolution that will be approving, and down here you'll see, like, the funds. So the town has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine funds that we budget. And so, that's not banking terms, but pots of money. The town has nine different pots of money. There's certain restrictions on what goes out of each pot of money. A majority of the money comes out of the general fund and the utilities authority. So. And then we have the different departments within the funds. So we will start with the general fund first. This, we have a budget history, and what it does is it gives you your revenue. I usually go through this at the beginning of that part as I'm giving them their stuff to go through. I go through the revenue, and I look at, like, it gives me history, and then it gives me, like, this is as of April 30th. This is right here, the actual, to date.
Okay, thank you.
Is through April 30th. So I will take that usually and divide it by however much it is, and then multiply by 12 to give me what I think we're going to bring in.
Okay.
Which, our sales tax and stuff is running right in line, maybe a little bit over, but in revenue, I try to be very conservative because I've seen years where, you know, we've done really good, and then the next year it's like, almost bottoms out. So I try to be real conservative with revenue. And, sales tax, the general fund gets, out of the four cents, the general fund gets two cents. The other two cents goes to restricted. So that's what the sales tax, sales tax and use tax both. Electric franchise, O G and E sends us a check every month, and that's the franchise tax that everybody pays who has service within our city limits. The gas franchise tax, that would be O and G. We get a gas franchise check from them every month, too. Telephone and cable, as you'll see, cable is no longer, is there really a cable TV, so we don't, we just have telephone there. And it's getting minimal because everybody's going to cell phones instead of landlines. Occupational license, that would be like any plumbers, electricians, heating and air, people who are coming in and getting an occupational license. Also would be anybody who's getting a sales permit, you know, they give door to door salesmen, so. Building permits, that's pretty much what it is, includes anybody building anything that could get a building permit, they, they come in and they get some there. Alcoholics beverage tax, we get, the county sends us, we get money for the sales for alcoholic beverage in town. Cigarette tax, that would be, in other words, there's a municipal tax on cigarettes, so we get that. Grants, that's self-explanatory. Swimming pool receipts, that's how much we make in the swimming pool, admission concession and whatnot, pool parties. Return check charges, fire runs. In the past, we used to bill for fire runs outside of the city limits because, once again, the city's only in charge of protecting us inside the town, and so anything that was outside the state limits, we would bill for fire runs. So some of that money would go into the general fund, and the other one would go into the rural fire fund. So, I've talked to Brandon, and we're going to start billing those again, so that we can, you know, start paying for some more of their stuff that they need. Police fines, that's, once they go to court and stuff, then that gets put in there, and then interest, which we've been very fortunate, interest has been high. Rent, that would include anything like the campgrounds that we had. I know when we had the daycare, that rent would go in, anything that we would run out. Right now, we have the senior citizens building grant that goes into there. Oil and gas royalties, we do get a little bit of money from oil and gas royalties. And then insurance reimbursement, we had that because we used to get reimbursed for some people's insurance through the state program. And then cemetery lot sales, that right there is anybody who buys a plot. Eighty-seven and a half percent goes into the general fund, and 12 and a half percent goes into the cemetery perpetual care fund. And then the pavilion use, since we have the pavilion, now we're, people are using it, so we created a line item for it. Reimbursements, sometimes we get, we make an overpayment for something, and so that's where we put that, easier for our auditors' pin account to track. Other, sometimes you just get stuff that you don't know, like, doggy jail, I mean, you just put it into other. And then donation, I guess. And then there's transfers into H U A. You'll see that we've budgeted, but we've never sent this, we've never brought money in. H U A can send money to the general fund to help support the general fund, but the general fund cannot move money from the general fund to H U A to help H U A. So we only do it when we need it, so.
Tiffany, can you repeat what you said on the reimbursements line, please? I missed that.
The insurance reimbursements, or reimbursements.
Yeah, this one, it's four blocks up, three blocks up from the H U A transfers in.
Sometimes there's been an overpayment, and they will send us a refund check. I do know this had insurance reimbursement, but I, looking at these numbers, I can tell you that O F, or, O F, Insure Oklahoma, we had some of our employees on Insure Oklahoma, and they would send us a check to cover some employees' insurance, and that would go into there, instead of, it was put into there instead of up here under insurance reimbursement.
Thank you.
Because normally, if we overpaid, like, the other day, we got one for like $34, because we overpaid by $34, so. And then, we're still in revenues, restricted, so our sales tax and use tax is split up, you know, that 2% out of, that's leftover, that doesn't go into the general fund, it's split up between streets, capital outlay, the ambulance, and the swimming pool. So streets gets a quarter cent, capital outlay gets a quarter percent, ambulance gets a half cent, and then the swimming pool gets a full cent. So that's how that money is split up, too. Hotel tax, that's pretty self-explanatory. Any type of grants that we're running through here, such as your C D B Gs, that we're using maybe the street money, or we're using some capital outlay, anytime we're using restricted money for grants and stuff, then when we get money back from that grant, then it goes into the, the same pool of money. So that's why there will be grants in every one of these. ARPA proceeds, that's when we got, we had to do a line item for that because that was the ARPA money that the state, or the feds, sent us for COVID. Interest, self-explanatory, and then other and donations. We also have a transfer and C D B G, that's another thing, the state, when we do a C D B G grant, they send it to our C D B G, we have to show it into the C D B G fund, and then we can transfer it in, so. Street and alley, that right there is the gasoline excise tax and litter vehicle tax. Gasoline, pretty self-explanatory, that's why I encourage people to help maybe buy gas in town, or buy their tax in town, because it helps us with, with our revenue stream. We usually use this, the street and alley fund, to pay for our street lighting, but our street lighting is way more than $19,000 a year. So we, like, this past year, we put most of it into general fund because there's, there's just not enough money in street and alley, so. Rural fire, that right there is 10% of our fire run money goes into the rural fire. The other 90% goes into the general fund to help pay for expenditures, but as you can tell, we haven't billed in a while. But they still, there's still money in the pot, so they still get interest, so that's pretty much what that is. Cemetery care, that was at 12 and a half percent for lot sales, that goes into the cemetery care fund, and then interest. Library funds, this is done, we, every year we get a, a library grant from Oklahoma Department of Libraries, that money comes into here, and then there's interest and checking, and then they do get, the actual library does get some oil and gas royalties, and then that was donated to them. And then the other is fines, forfeitures, donate, I mean, donations, they, that's a separate item, but fines and forfeitures, but, you know, fees from the library. And then the juvenile fund. That's if tickets aren't written for a juvenile that's non-traffic, such as a curfew violation, or maybe they stole something, or disturbing the peace, you know, just non-traffic related for a juvenile, then they actually go to juvenile court, and that money has to be kept separate from everything else, and it can only be spent on certain things. So that's why we have a juvenile fund. And then the C D B G grant, we only use this when we have C D B G grants. So, and then we have the utilities authorities, grants, water services, sewer services, garbage. Ambulance, we no longer, we no longer do. The ambulance was when our citizens could buy a membership and get billed onto their water bill, and then we would pay that membership every year. So, but we don't do that now, so. Penalties, that's late fees, 10% of their bill if it's not paid by the 15th. Return check charges, water taps, if somebody's wanting new water service, they don't have a meter, then we go up there and we do a water tap. Reconnect fees, connection fees, reconnect fees is when they get shut off and they have to come in and pay that $35 reconnect fee, that goes into their connection fees. That right there is if they move places, then we charge them $15 at their new location just to switch it over, so that's what the connection fee is. Interest, self-explanatory, and then the transfer station, which is down there at the dome. And then we no longer have an O W R B loan, so we no longer use that one. And then we have Snyder Trust, that right there is money that was left from the Snyder's to use on the senior citizens building or a library museum. So, I think it has like 30 some thousand dollars in it, so we still get interest on that. So, that, that goes through all of our revenue. Any question on our revenue? So now we'll start with expenditures, and I don't know how you want to go through the expenditures, we can go by, we can start with the general fund and go through the departments. I brought the department heads in here, so if you have any questions, they're here to help me. They turned in their request on what they want, actually, everything that they wanted, I think, is in here. The only thing that we haven't kind of went through is expenditure, I mean, capital projects, what they want to do, I don't have that, it was all the way in there yet, but we can go through that, so we can get to the restricted. So, in the general funds, the first department we had was Department 10, that's like our governing body. Board members are paid $75 a month, the mayor's paying $125 a month, and so that is where that comes from. I would like to put into there, I haven't yet, but I would like to put in there for travel and training, because if a board member, I would like to keep that separate than just the general fund. So if the board member goes to O M L conference, or they go to a school, then it comes out of the governing body budget, instead of just the actual group down at the bottom.
Okay.
I don't know what you guys think, I think that would be good to see, that way people can see, too.
I think that it's good to keep it a separate line item, so they can see where we're going with, where we're going with things like that.
Administration is for just the payroll in here. It is, we, that would, it only covers, like, half of the payroll in here. The rest is going to come out of the general, or out of H U A, so.
Tiffany, excuse me just a minute, is that half of the payroll, is, is all your payroll in here, or for you personally, or is it also split?
It's split.
Okay. So everything, you plus the three ladies that work out, okay.
It's all split.
Okay.
The town clerk has a line item, and the town clerk gets paid $400 a month, which is $4,800 a year. And so it has that, this is another department that I would, I guess you do have travel and train, that I did put travel and training in, because I think that's another one, if they go to training, then I think that it needs to be kept separate, too. Then we have town treasurer, the town treasurer gets paid $300 a month, and I added travel and training on that one, too, because that way they have money in there to do conferences, so. Our town attorney, we no longer use this because we pay them $10.99, so we no longer pay him salary, so it comes out of the individual departments of where he's charged.
I was going to say, Jerry's a bargain for this.
We used to keep it, because they were paid on a retainer basis, and so we kept it here, but now that he bills per call, and so like, if, when Andy calls him and wants to talk about a sewer problem, or something like that, then it would give him to the sewer. He line items, everything, and then I go back and break it down into where it came from, I mean, what the subject was.
Okay.
A lot of times, though, if it's generic, say they want to talk about, I think we had one last month where somebody called in about the election stuff, then that right there would go into the general, I mean, it would go into the general government, which we'll see back there, and that's like our catch-all, but it has attorneys to pay for that. A municipal judge, we pay the judge $750, I think? No, sorry, sorry. Maybe it's 700, $700 a month, I believe. Or 700, and for him to come and do all of our court stuff, which last night they were here for a couple hours, and then he does anything by phone or anything like that. The police department, this is, this is salaries for five officers, and then their administrative assistant Brady, and then anything that they had, office supplies, self-explanatory, computers supplies, building maintenance supplies, such as comment to clean the toilet, or windmills, or paper towels, or toilet paper. Vehicle parts and supplies, gasoline, all the fuel, which comes on the wax seal. Equipment parts, which would be like, their radio goes, they need a new antenna on their radio, they have to kind of have equipment parts. And then there's building materials, a lot of times we don't really use building materials because to me, building materials and building maintenance supplies kind of run hand-in-hand. Building materials would be anything like, maybe they need a, a new front door, or, or something like that, so we always keep that in there, which is a minimal amount of money. Uniform, we do pay the officers, or we give the officers a, a uniform allowance of?
300?
300, is it 300?
I think so.
Per year, where they can buy uniforms and boots. It all comes through the city, so we don't pay them, so we make sure that they get the uniforms and boots. Then small tools and equipment, they need a new flashlight, they need something small, then that would come out of there. Police dog supplies, we don't have a police dog now, I think I kept just a minimal amount in there, just to keep it open, but that's something that we can even, because we don't have a police dog. Other materials, if it doesn't fit in, like, these first numbers, they're actual products, something you can put in your hand, and if it doesn't fit one of those categories, then it gets thrown into other. The next set of numbers is, or line items is going to be actual services, so this would be some type of service and not actual product. We have vehicle maintenance, so that would be the actual labor to repair the vehicles, equipment maintenance, building maintenance, we say we have a heating and air guy come out, or an electrician. Electric utility, that would be the electric, foam cost, and gas utilities, contractual services, contractual services is like, let me see what's, have this.
Digit ticket.
Is that where we put digit ticket?
I, I believe so, yeah. Digit ticket and the Otis, and that itself.
Also, if I needed to, I can go in here and say we want to look and see what goes in contractual services, which that was. 6335, so I can go into here, and I can. So he came to me and he said, well, why did I spend so much money in that category? I can come in here, and I could print a detail just on, on that code, and it will tell me exactly what came out of that. So, so now we see, like, dispatching services. We pay for King Fisher County 911 to dispatch for us, so half of this comes out of here, and half of it comes out of the fire department. Tammy was telling me, our accountant Tammy, she was telling me, hey Tiffany, why don't we start taking that out of the emergency services in capital, in restricted? Oh, I didn't even think about that. She said, yeah, it will, it, it fits the definition where you could use that money. So instead of general fund next year, starting in February, we're going to start taking that, and we're going to do it out of the restricted capital outlay, which we have like $800,000 in there, so.
How much would we pay for dispatch services?
It's about 70, it's right around $7,000 a month, so.
So I guess this is the time we can ask questions about specific departments?
You can, you can ask questions anytime.
I know when we first started contracting with 911, we kept one of our dispatchers, who I guess is now an administrative assistant, and the board talked about doing that for the first year or two to, for public to come in, so that, because they were used to seeing a face there, is that something that's still necessary?
Brady now doesn't just do, I mean, he's our, he's the police department's records officer again, so he deals with all of the records requests, which they get, we started getting that on my report, he gets probably close to 10 a week on that, where they come in, or they fax in a records request, and he gets those records. And he's also helping them with the evidence room, he's making sure that that stays up to date. So he's doing more than what he just dispatched before.
Right.
So that's why he's pretty much an administrative assistant for the police department. I know if they need anything, like, if I ask Christian to do some research on something, that's what he gives Brady to do, you know, on, say, let's find something cheaper, or let's, you know, let's check around for this, then he has Brady do that for him.
Okay.
I know, just like, David put in a request on the, the police car stuff, and good thing we had him, because he spent like 24 hours gathering all of the information that David needed to be able to make that educated decision on one of the agenda items.
Right.
So, yeah, he is, he is.
Well, I mean, I, I knew he'd stay busy, but I just wanted to.
Yes, and, and the police department's still open to the public from 8 to 5 every day.
Okay.
Without, with, except for lunch. Now, occasionally Brady will be gone sick or vacation or something like that, and then there'll be a sign on the door that they can call or whatever, but most of the time, the police department is open from 8 to 5.
And I will say, is that part alone has been really good, because a lot of people don't want to call, they want to walk into the station.
Correct.
And so that has really, it's been really good, because I, incidences that they probably called, could have called, like, let's say, last night, they prefer to come in and talk to, talk face-to-face, well, we can't just leave the door open, you know, unlocked, and then not have anybody there.
Sure.
So it's been, it's been good, but, yeah, like Tiffany said, he does a lot of different roles, so.
Tiffany?
Tiffany, is the page you have, that document you have on the screen right now, would that be a good example for other departments also? Is it the other departments want to have something very similar to this in the database? Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, anything.
Yeah, would you mind hitting print for me? I would like to have a copy of that page right there.
Just this page?
Yeah, just that page.
Okay.
Thank you.
For instance, I can, I mean...
No, I don't want the whole document, just that page.
The whole document's eleven hundred pages.
I was expecting that, that's why I said just this page. Thank you.
So, any other questions?
So, under here, on the line bonus pay, so it says that we budgeted zero, but the actual's eighty-seven seventy-one. So whenever the board, I know the board approved the bonuses every year. So when we do that, does that come out of each department's general fund? Or is that something that we move money into their...
So once again, we budget by department.
Right.
So as long as that department has money in it, then we don't have to line item budget or bonus. It does come out of the bonus. See how the current actual is forty-eight seventy-three?
I'm selling the police department part.
Okay, well, I'm just going to show you, I didn't go back yet. But like right here, it does come out of there, even though we didn't budget. Because I don't budget for it because I don't know what you guys are going to do.
Absolutely.
And so as long as there's money within that department, within that fund, then you're okay.
So my question is, is the board spending the police department's money by giving them a bonus? Are we taking eight thousand dollars out of their budget? Or that could be going to other things that they need?
Yes. But that would also maybe create a budget amendment in it later on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I just, I wasn't sure, like, you know, if they were, they were trying to get something that they needed, but yet we gave them the bonus and now all of a sudden that money's gone.
That's when, because we are budgeting out money that we anticipate to bring in. So a lot of times too, I mean, it will boil down to are we getting in the money that we thought we were going to get in?
Sure.
Or are we getting in more? Therefore, you know, it doesn't really matter. But that way also we keep a kind of a grip on how much money we have. We can change it and put bonus money into their, into the budget.
I was just curious because I don't want to, my thought is, is, I mean, obviously it's nice for them, those guys to get a bonus, is there a way that we could do it differently for them, but not take out of their pot, I guess basically is what I'm saying. Because I don't think it's fair for the board to say, we're going to spend, you know, I see this as, that's Christian's pot. Well, I don't want the board sticking their hand in that pot from him. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, I stick my hand in their pot.
Well, sure, but I'm just, you know.
Oh, that looks like police department, it's coming out of Christian's money.
Absolutely. So, that was, that was just my question. But yeah, obviously we could fix that with a budget amendment, but I just don't want to...
Or we can budget just a ballpark number in there. But then again, we budget that ballpark number in there and then right now we're setting in a twelve thousand dollar in the red, pulling out a fund balance. So then we're going to have more, but we're going to have to cut somewhere else.
I agree. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, I'm just curious how that works.
December when we do bonuses, how is the town doing?
Right.
You know, is the town doing well enough to get the bonus? Or there may be a year that we don't.
Sure. I hope that doesn't happen.
I hope so too.
Okay, that answers my question.
I have a question about the fire department. Do we still have a county sales tax for fire?
That is for, that covers the, I mean...
Does that, does that sales tax money all go into a county fund?
Yes.
Yes.
So everything Hennessy collects, everything Kingfisher collects, it all goes into one fund? Then how is that divided out?
No, we get, we get it divided between the, all the departments. It's, it gets divided upon coverage area.
One of the, one of the sales tax, there's two.
Yeah, based upon your coverage area, the fire district. I think it is, so many miles you get so much of them. And then the other one, I think is just divided between...
Why, why do they have two? What are the two different taxes for the fire department?
You want me to answer that, Brandon, since that was before your time? I'm not trying to jump in over you, but many years ago, probably twenty at least, the county came up with a sales tax that was split between roads, sheriff's department,
Library.
Libraries, the health department, the fair, the fire departments. And at that time, the fire departments, and Hennessy Fire Department kind of pushed this because we cover more square miles than any fire department in the county. So we pushed to have that one split by square miles of coverage because there's some smaller departments that don't cover near as much territory. And so that was done. And then several years later, the fire departments got together and asked the commissioners to put up for a quarter cent tax just strictly for fire. And they did, and it passed. And that was divided evenly among the, is it seven or eight departments? And that, that was helping a lot until they built the new jail and the commissioners redirected ninety percent of that money to go towards the jails. So the fire department's portion was left of ten percent. So that has been, that has cut into what they have to spend on. Typically it's capital outlay purchases, big, big things or large repairs.
So that, that was, that was voted in as a, as a sales tax for the fire departments? And then they redirected it to the jail?
It got voted on to be redirected to the jail.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, which the fire departments endorsed initially because it was the understanding, once the jail got paid for, the jail was supposed to be able to, be able to support itself. And then that money would come back to the fire departments.
Okay, do they have a proposed date as to when that's going to be paid for?
It's paid for. It's my understanding.
The jail did get paid for and it got paid for pre, like before the bill was up. So whenever it comes back up for renewal, then we'll have to determine, does that money come back to the fire departments or does it go? I don't think it's coming up, I think it's coming later. I think... But isn't that one?
I think that's for the original.
That's the other one, that's the one they share. That's, that's the one that's coming up, the one that we shared, the library and everybody else. But the one that the fire departments, just for the fire department, that's the one currently is paying for operating costs for the jail. Essentially, that's what's happening.
So that comes up for a public vote every so many years?
That will come up for a public vote. I believe that was a ten-year tax, right?
I believe you're right.
I don't remember exactly the year that that got changed for the jail. So that one, that ten-year is a, the half-cent one that we shared with the libraries and stuff is up there.
And when that got redirected, was that, was that a vote by the, by the commissioners or by the public?
Public.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't quite state that right. Commissioners called for the...
Commissioners called for the vote.
And like Brandon said, the fire department supported it. And again, Brandon, I'm sorry, I'm trying to take, but I was in your position then. And the fire department supported it because we saw the need for a new county jail. And the agreement was that that money would come back once the jail was paid for.
So when they built that jail, they built that jail to supposedly house inmates from out of county or income. And then that was supposed to help support the jail, right?
Correct.
And then, but they built that jail to be able to do that. But in doing so, when they built that jail, they also had to staff that jail as if it was full. Am I still correct on that?
That's the way I understand it, yes.
So even though they're not housing the prisoners that they was able to, they're still having to staff it like if it was.
Yeah.
So their operating cost is way high. They're, so basically they're using the sales tax money to build the jail, they're using it to operate on that. That's my understanding.
Okay, well, I think it's very important to have good fire departments all over the county. And that's, that's why I'm asking. I know money makes good fire departments.
Yeah, just police department do, it says fire on it, it's expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and let's go down, let's see contractual service, travel and training. Advertising, that's a lot of times, which we don't do too much advertising anymore since we have All About Hennessy. A lot of times we have free resource sites, such as All About Hennessy. We put the CLEEP for the police department, we put it on the CLEEP website. I mean, there's just all kinds of free, free advertising for if we have an opening. So a lot of times we don't have advertising anymore. Membership and dues, this would be like Christians, Chiefs Association, the fire department, when we get down there, it'll be like their firefighter association dues, things like that. Postage, we always just put a little bit of money because they do get stamps from us and so we allocate about one roll of stamps for them a year. Fire department, pretty much the same thing.
So probably including my Chiefs Association in there.
Well, I guess I'll find out where it goes. I don't know, I mean, because it covers the same thing. So I don't know if you want to go individually and know why numbers or different things or if you just wanted an overview, I'm not sure. This is the first one we've done education-wise as far as the budget. So I'm not really sure exactly what you guys want me to do to, to give you guys the most benefit out of this.
Okay, so, so something, so vehicle parts and supplies, I see that is one line item. And then vehicle maintenance. So what's the difference between those two?
Parts and supplies is actual product, like the tires, oil filters, different things like that. Maintenance is going to be the mechanic who's fixing that.
Labor?
Yeah, it's labor.
Okay, so, so one is, one is if we went and got parts, the other one is if we took it to a shop? Okay. So that would be the same for building maintenance and all those, all those other things as well?
Equipment maintenance and equipment maintenance supplies. When we get into the utilities, we have utilities system parts and then we have utility system maintenance, kind of the same thing. If you'll notice the numbers, like, take the fire department right here. This one hundred forty, sixty-one, ten. That, any sixty-one hundred has to deal with personals, or personnel services. So anything to do with our employers or our employees. Sixty-two hundreds, that deals with actual products, so supplies, anything you can put in your hand. Sixty-three hundreds, that's all labor or, or services. And then your sixty-fours are going to be capital out, you know, that's big process.
Okay. That makes sense.
And if you'll notice on the streets on page eleven, I took out personnel services out of that. That is because we created a new department on page twelve called Public Works. So I've taken, that's another place where I have taken all of Alyssa's crew and put them all under one department. And then they're split between the general fund and the utilities authority. Because we used to, we got where, being a small municipality, everybody has to kind of help everybody. Can't really have like, you know, a person in the parks, a person in the cemetery because they're not really dedicated to that because sometimes they need to fix, help fix a water leak or sometimes they need to help sweep a street. So we're just going to combine them all and then split them between general fund and utilities authority.
So will street department down here as a budget department go away? And all be combined into public utili, I mean, public?
I still wanted to keep like your sixty-two hundreds and sixty-three hundreds kind of separate to know exactly how much we're spending on say, streets or like parts, you know, as far as like electric and utilities.
Personnel ones?
Just personnel, yes.
So that leads into my question, Tiffany. So let's talk about time accounting for just a minute. Is, is it, the way you guys are, when you get this done or if you've already got it done, can we pull data on man-hours? But, you know, based on, let's say Alyssa's crew is working a water leak today and they're mowing in the cemetery tomorrow. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we don't keep track of that.
We don't, so we can't? I guess what I'm saying is, is, I would, I would like to be able to, I'll talk to you about it some other time, it's kind of off-topic. I want to talk about time accounting and man-hours and how we do that.
Because, I mean, we would spend more time accounting and trying to figure out, I mean, to me, this is, if the board says this is what I want, then, you know, that of course will make it happen. But if we're focusing on recording how much time, say they go to the cemetery and they're there for two hours and then they go fix a water leak for two hours and then they go sweep streets for two hours, we're doing a lot of record-keeping instead of them just checking in at eight o'clock in the morning and then clocking out at, you know, five p.m. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And I'm not saying that I want anything. I, I just, I'm just thinking about stuff in the future is what I'm doing. And I, I, end of question, thank you. I got, you know, you told me that you're not doing that, so I'm not asking you to do it. I'm just talking out loud, that question popped in my mind.
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine. I just, I'm trying to utilize the employees and have them not so focused on, you know, individualized, you know, accounting and that's why I group them all into my department. Because we've got Kyle right now who's paid out of the water department, but he's, sometimes he's at the cemetery mowing. Well, we're not allocating that, so we're just going to group them together so that we don't have to so that they don't sit there and spend thirty minutes trying to figure out what they get here and what they get there.
Yeah, so bottom line, what you're telling me is, is you guys don't track man-hours. You just track time on the clock. You don't track man-hours on specific...
In jobs.
Specific functions, water department versus parks department. I got it, thank you, I got it. Thank you very much.
Tiffany, along that same line, Tiffany, along that same line, um, you do, on their time cards, do they still break out?
Do you have time cards anymore?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it's all database.
I knew that.
That's why I was asking.
When, when they did paper cards, they would write two hours here and two hours there.
Sure, yeah, yes, sir. Now, you're.
Forgot about that. Thank you.
I think the rest of this is pretty self-explanatory, but we will get down here to general government. This right here is where I said that, um, there, this is the catch-all, like if it doesn't fit under, if it fits like multiple or say the insurance line item is the town's insurance. Um, we take 50% out of the town side, 50% out of the utilities authority. General government gets, that's where that insurance money hits. Um, if the attorneys come into a board meeting, then that's where that comes out of, is general fund, um, on the, or general government on the, um, general fund side and the H base side. So it's kind of a catch-all. Kind of our miscellaneous covers all departments. That's why there's no salaries in there because that right there is, if we individually have the dis salaries, it's the other departments.
Can we back up to, because we skipped some departments, correct?
Yes. So I mean, Paul, is the, we missed, uh, parks, or we have just.
I'd like to, because we kind of ended with police, I'd like to go on with fire.
Okay.
Um, John brought up this county sales tax. I think it would be helpful if, and correct me if I'm wrong, you and Brandon, either one, but it seems like when things come up, is this coming out of county tax, is this a town expenditure, et cetera? Would it help you all if there was designated earmarked items that county tax was used for and earmarked items that town money was used for?
Such as?
Well, such as you have a big repair on a truck, is that town's responsibility or is that county or where are we at on that?
I think we can.
Alyssa can see where he's got money.
For lack of better terms, yeah, I was going to say, and I've just kind of been winging it. Um, that being said, if I know that something's coming up and we can discuss it and I can put it in the budget here, great. But if something comes up throughout the year that I didn't have in the budget, then I just soon try to fall back on that county tax money. That being said, kind of like what I told John a while ago, the cost of things in New Orleans, and we did use a lot of our county sales tax money building the new department, the new station. And so therefore I've been trying, we've been, you know, relying on the town budget just as much and trying not to just throw everything towards the county. But with that being said, you know, there are things that is needed, there's things that we try to update on and, you know, just like it's a bigger cost to the town putting the six new guys on. But that being said, you know, also went through OSFA, got their grant money, their shift issue became here pretty soon, they got approved, so that'll be reimbursed, but, you know, to cover the cost of their gear. Um, we've also been doing things to try to help out with them scenarios as far as, you know, if you find out we've got our instructors, so we're able to teach a lot of these classes and we're not having to go to code tech and pay $1,700 per person for class. We're able to cut that cost by, you know, just by two thirds. So I think this last time, like, to send them to either OSU, FST or Autry for their EMR class, it was going to cost 17 points per person. And because Levi and I can teach it and because we're through Hartland, it was 450 per person. So that was the price difference.
Okay.
But as far as paying for stuff with the county and being able to actually earmark stuff goes here or stuff goes there, I think it'd be kind of, you know, might be tough to do, might not.
Yeah.
Those old, the old brush trucks, you know, we're, we're putting money into those and fix them up. We're relying on donations a lot to fix them up, like a lot of the piping going to pumps on R2 and R3 is all driven water, the whole we can, um, can just donate to the materials so that we can go in and refill on those. Um, some of the, the bumpers are getting tore up, we're actually in the process of looking to see if I get a new spade. And we're, we're doing that kind of stuff with fundraiser money to try to help out with segment. Um, we're also looking at putting in stickers on R2 and R3 because we're, we're fixing up what we have to try to make it last longer. And that's why in my capital outlay, I included, we put a new turbo last year in R2, but R3 needs one also.
And these trucks are '06 models.
Yes.
I want to, I want to clarify that, so they're, they're approaching 20 years old.
We're doing the best we can with what we have. Um, R3 is the one that needs the new turbo and AC in it. Uh, we did the one, and we based this number off of, and I actually didn't include that in capital outlay, I actually put that in general this time because I knew it was coming. And, um, but I understand the brush trucks, they go out in the county and they do a lot of the county fires. But that being said, you know, we've also used county money for the tankers which assist here in town and they went towards E2 to help purchase it.
Right.
Um, so trying to, just trying to keep up with the trucks we have, we also have, there's a couple of boughs on E1 still that need to be fixed that was quoted at running around $1,300 from minor to get fixed, even though they just repaired some of those on the last year's.
Mm-hmm.
So as far as being able to actually earmark between town and county, I don't know, but we just have to kind of sit down.
Well, I didn't, I, yeah, I didn't know if there was a way to say, well, these trucks respond more in the county, like your brush bumpers and the, the E1, E2 that are city pumpers respond mostly here, although we, E2 does go out.
I think that's another reason why we talked about going ahead and starting to build for the fire runs outside of the, the city limits.
And, but what we talked about was on the billing side of the two, right, was billing in, because the insurance has had an allowance in there for.
They do, yes, they do.
And so that's kind of what we're looking at as far as building, correct?
Build them and then they give it to their insurance and then the insurance pays it.
The other thing I want to bring up, and Brandon, I'm sure you knew this was coming, salaries have doubled, uh, because we're, in my opinion, paying two entities to run medical calls. We're paying Life EMS 16,000 and some dollars a month. That Hennessy fire's going on every ambulance call, correct?
We get called out at the same time.
And I know a lot of those calls are not necessary because they're nursing home calls, somebody just needs to be transported to the hospital from the care center. Uh, because, don't get me wrong, I totally 100% understand that fire needs to be called on car accidents, unresponsive patients, pediatrics and things like that. But I'm questioning why we're running on all of these unnecessary calls.
So for one, in the SOG that I've just put out to the guys, medical calls, I only want four responders. And I want those to be the four licensed responders or to have a medical, some sort of medical license. So that would limit the number of guys going to the calls. Um, the second side of that is too, just like yesterday, uh.
Two days ago?
Huh?
Two days ago.
Ambulance picked one up and before they were out of city limits to transport, we had another medical call. So either way you look at it, you're looking at 20 to 30 minutes for another ambulance from either.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Or anyone get back. But if you go start stipulating what calls you respond to, then that's a person just sitting there looking, nobody that called 911 for help.
But wouldn't dispatch know that the ambulance was out? Why, why not? They.
Because life also covers Marshall. They have no idea. Or if the nursing home calls direct to life, our dispatch has no idea. The message doesn't get delayed, even though I've requested it, even though I put a radio in the ambulance.
I understand.
To tell our dispatch.
And Brandon, let me tell you, I faced the exact same problems. I know. I've been there and fought that fight.
My concern is for the people.
And I don't, to me, that's a dispatch problem that, that they need to correct.
On the way around. My concern is for the people. And if I had a family member pick up the phone and call 911 for help, I want somebody there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And if we don't know that the ambulance is telling Marshall want to call, then we get somebody there. And, and now that being said too, with my hands license, you know, I may perform more care to a patient and I'm going to have to, that does a conversation for another time. But my, my concern, my focus is before you, and you even saw this before you left, that five-year-old calls because grandpa's not feeling good and it goes into dispatch and it comes out as a sick call, so we don't get called because it's a sick call and not a cardiac arrest, when in actuality, he's in a respiratory state of heart attack. You know, it's hard to keep that determination. Um, you know, we also had instances before where car wrecked right outside of town, they didn't feel like fire was necessary or needed to be there. And that was a dispatching issue.
Exactly. And you're 100% right.
So when you say, when you start putting stipulations on it, we're, we're sitting here talking about dispatching issues and when you start putting stipulation on it, you're putting more into the dispatcher's hands or the hands of the recording party as to whether or not we respond to it. Whereas if you just say straight across the board, it's, it's, it's complications. But I understand your point and that's why I've tried to cut it back to, I only want four guys responding. I only want, and, and in the middle of the night, you're probably only going to get one guy anyway. Or during the workday when everybody's on the work, you're probably only going to get one or two guys anyway. But yeah, it, that's one of those situations where I don't know if it's fixed to it, but if I limit the number of guys responding to medical calls, that's my way of helping address, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I think that's, I think that's good.
But I do understand, I, I get it. Um, the fire service, you can ask anybody nowadays, has switched, you're not just there for the fire anymore, it's fire EMS across the board. We do it in each department. And it was just yesterday.
Okay, I was thinking of a different call.
It was just yesterday, we had the one call and then we came right around and had another call.
Well, I was thinking, two days ago when we got the call, it was a hangup. So everybody came because we didn't know what we had. So we ended up with a whole bunch of people there.
I even got called on that, just.
That was a different situation.
Geographically.
All together, but yesterday we actually had two medical calls, back to back. So that's just my way of trying to provide the service, but I do understand.
Okay. I'm ready to move on.
Do I have one?
Yeah.
So, um, everybody skip the fire streets. And now this is just like, this doesn't include fixing any streets, except for maybe it has street materials and we do like our, um, our bags, hole patch, you know, patch to patch the potholes or some sand or some rock or something like that. That's in this, but if we actually going to actually go and resurface a street or whatever, that'll be in our capital outlay streets. And I just want everybody to look at the electric utility, that street lighting bill, $100. There's a lot of money that goes to light up our streets.
Is that, and that's under electric utility, correct? Or am I missing something?
Yes. Then we have our public works, which we talked about, where we moved all of the outside workers into one pot. Then we have parks, um, where we took out the salaries there because we put them in public works and we have all of their line items.
So the only thing we have under public works is just the employees?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So that way we can still see how much we're spending, you know, for street lighting or for, you know, things like that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
This one pool, um, the main thing that I want to point out too here is under, other than materials and supplies, that one's pretty hefty, but I will tell you that that's where we get all of our concession items. Um, when we go to Sands or we go to Ammonon to get concession supplies, um, that's, that's where that money goes, but so it's pretty hefty, but mind you, that's the only way that the town comes in, comes out ahead with the central pool. Otherwise we would be in the hole with the central pool if we didn't do the concession.
So do we offer concession for parties? Do we ever have requests for that?
We do this year. And we have, we have a couple of churches having got to bring in two, three hundred people, um, from EMEA and they've requested that our concession be open.
Okay. I was just curious about that.
So then, do you, does that mean we hire an extra person to run the concession?
We will bring in, yes, we will bring in.
But it'll be worth it, I'm not saying that.
We will bring in extra person and to run that concession. And this year for the smaller parties, we're only going to have three bars, um, whereas last year we did four, but I found that some of them are like standing next to each other and different things, so we're only going to let them leave this year unless we know it's a big party there.
Okay.
And then you have general government, that's one. And then you have general government, that's the one that I said is a potential pod. And you know, your, such as our audit and our accounting services, that's a big ticket item in that. But that's where we put half of that into the general fund and to H two A, so we put a hundred of the general government. And the same as the insurance.
Would the attorney fees be under general government?
And a lot of them are, but say we had, uh, like this past year, we had a, a person who put a claim against us for a sewer, a sewer line. So when he billed that, I broke that out and, and charged that to sewer attorney fees.
Okay.
Um, tried to break up what he, but now like when he comes to board meetings and stuff, that comes under the, that general government.
Okay. Is there a, oh, legal, legal services, I see it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And election cause, um, we only do that every other year, so there's not many, but it is in there this year. And we just, uh, museum senior citizen, since we took over the building, we do now have, we do pay the electric for the senior citizens building and the gas, so, um, we now have a, um, some line items for the senior center.
Can I ask you a question there?
Sure.
Twenty twenty five current, on their gas bill, we've got twenty one hundred and seven dollars. Then I'm like, that's to five hundred.
Um, I think that there was a couple of things that were, and we can pull that up, let's pull that up. Yeah, that'll be one that we'll need to increase. You know, going into last year, we didn't know what it was gonna take to run that senior center.
I'm just trying to remember what, when we took that over. I remember the meeting, but I don't remember what month it was.
It's been right out of about a year and a half.
Okay.
But we just started, I just opened up that line item this past year.
Okay. Well, it looks like we budgeted plenty for the electric utility.
Yes, a lot of times, um, O G and E, we get free usage down on some of our accounts. Um, so many, a lot of hours or whatever, so a lot of times like your police department, your town hall, they don't get a, an electric bill from August until January or February.
That's great.
So this is another one that we get. We don't actually have to pay it after.
And that's part of our franchise agreement, I think, correct?
Yes. And then you have the library, um, this is pretty much main, um, the employees in maintaining the building. A lot of times his books, I mean, there is a little bit of money budgeted in books, but most of his books is done out of a library fund, um, that he gets the grant money from. If you think of all these electric bills and gas bills, I know, um, in the past, I've been a big promoter of, of trying to combine this all into one municipal building. This is another, um, you guys may look into like all the electric bills that we pay for the different buildings, all the gas bills that we pay for the different buildings. Oh, and there's, there's a ton of electric bills, trust me. I really think that we would end up, if we did do a municipal building at some time, the town did, that we would save a lot of money in just utilities alone.
You mean one, one building to encompass town hall, library?
Police.
Police, everything.
Yeah. Because, you know, just like we're paying electric bill, I mean, the library is a big, huge place that we're paying. And it's only you, I mean, only a certain, a little bit of it is really used on a daily basis. Um, you take the police department, you know, the officers are out patrolling, they're in there maybe one hour a day for shift. So, I mean, you're talking, there's a lot of, you know, utilities that are. And building maintenance, building maintenance is another one, insurance. You know, we're covering insurance on all of those. And let me tell you, the insurance on the library is just as expensive as insurance, I mean, on any of them.
Well, it's probably the most because it's got the most square footage.
Well, the age too, age has a big factor on that.
Well, and they do replace that on the same square footage. Yeah. So then we have cemetery, this, um, right here is to maintain the cemetery. Um, most of the money we spend it out of this is done, um, in the summer months. There is a little bit that is done during the winter months, such as we have electric out there now to run the water and to run the little. So that's all of the general fund in a. Which like I said at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know if everybody heard, when we first asked me, he's like, how much, um, how much revenue versus expenditures in this current budget? Like, how far are we in the red? Um, right now, until we go in there and we fine tune this, um, with the managers, right now we're sitting at about eleven thousand dollars in the red for general fund.
And the, and the reason I asked that in the beginning, honestly expected it to be more. And had it been a hundred thousand, I was gonna recommend to the board that as we go through these line to line, we try to make that up because what it was down to is we're spending or budgeting to spend twelve thousand dollars more money than were taken in, which the town has got some reserve, but we can't dip into that year after year after year and survive. So, but I, I don't think twelve thousand would be too hard to trim out.
I mean, there's some other places where I know in the past, the town has done away with some fees and stuff. One of them is alcohol licenses. And before we would have like your packaging store had to buy a license and yearly license to make sure that they were good. Um, anybody who sold, um, three point two year, or you know, back then it was three point two. Um, it was only like ten dollars a year. But a lot of those things the board did away with. And so that understand, like that twelve thousand dollars, it perhaps if we brought back some of those, it would bring, it would make up for that.
I'm a big advocate of a balanced budget.
Oh, me too.
So with that twelve thousand dollars that you're speaking of, how much of that was because of our state audit as well?
Um, I don't have anything in there for the state audit. I mean, this year we went way over, I mean, they, we had to dip into our fund balance. Um, I think close to like seventy thousand dollars and that includes some out of, you know, out of the ordinary expenditures such as, you know, like the state audit and, you know, different things like that.
So, um, the other thing is our paging system, so I know you said that our nine one one service can go into that restricted. So we also have that paging system that we can use that I think split between police, fire and water.
Oh, you're talking about our.
Jesus, I, no.
You're talking about our cell service, sorry?
The, like when we have an emergency, everybody gets a phone call or a.
Oh, that is right now, yes, that is being paid out of there.
That's being paid out of our restricted sales, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
The code red system?
I think that's what it's called, yeah. Okay. So that's no longer being budgeted out of the fire, police.
I mean, like, I don't wanna.
If not, I guess my question is, is could that be taken out of that restricted sales tax?
That's being, um, out of the restricted, so it is emergency services.
Okay. So that's, that's part of that line right there out of the restricted sales tax then? The thirty, yeah, the thirty three ninety six. And so then you're saying we could also move our nine one one services also under this? Okay.
Hey, now it's a restricted, um, I have not put any money in this, um, but I would like, um, I'm gonna have each of my departments get up and tell you what they're looking at. And we have to sit down, we're gonna sit down together and go through the restricted. Um, this would be like projects, big projects such as, um, a new police car or a new truck or something to that effect, so I'll start with you, Christian, because I don't have any key down. Restricted.
So the, I just pointed out there, she asked you.
Your big expenses.
Okay, yeah. The only thing that I know that's come up that's like a capital outlay project is the, the car is, which is.
Origin.
It's original order.
And that's another thing, so we're getting ready, we've initiated, um, out of this budget, um, for the police car. But come June thirtieth, all of that gets wiped away and we start over fresh on July first. So his new police car, even though we gave a P O out and we allocated money from this fiscal year, we've got to put it into next fiscal year too, because we're not gonna pay that out until next fiscal year.
So that can just carry over?
Well, we'll put it in this one.
I mean, yes.
We'll have to account for it.
Spend in the current fiscal year, that we will just move over to the new fiscal year to, to, to spend, correct?
Yes, so if you see a new police car in restricted, it's not another police car. It's, we know we're not going to purchase this one this year, like actually pay for it. Cause we're a cash accounting system, we're not in a hurdle, so. Brandon?
Um, I had on here iPads, but that's been since taken care of. Um, but I put on here the possible concrete drive between Cherokee and the back of the new part of the station. I'd like to see about putting something in there. Wide enough that we can potentially have it to where if we got a ladder truck for the outriggers to be able to go out and we set up the ladder truck and be able to do testing and training with it on that drive. That way it's, we're not out there blocking any other streets or parking or anything like that, trying to test it or having to go somewhere. We can just back it out and do it all right there. Um, the other thing I've got on here is to start putting money back towards a seventy five foot ladder truck. I only put like a hundred thousand on here, but like my thoughts was start putting a hundred thousand back a year towards, towards it. That's gonna take a long time to get the money and by then the ladder truck will be.
I was saying, employees should might outrun you on that.
Yeah. I was just trying to spitball and get something, go in that direction.
The, and I've got a question right there. Tiffany, we've got restricted sales tax, uh, for emergency services, which I know is set aside and ladder truck would be purchased out of that. Can we further restrict that, uh, and set a sub account and put so much in a year because I, I feel like we need to reserve money aside for that. When I, when we first started looking at adding on to the fire station, I called and got pricing on the ladder truck and it was.
One point two?
No, that was the, the last.
No, the last is it's up to over one point five now.
Okay. But that was the dim of that, but when we started, I think it was eight hundred thousand. And in that length of time, it's gone up to one point five million. So, and that's why I said inflation may outrun us. But I would like to see us restrict a fund just for that purpose, so it goes in there and isn't touched by other things.
And that's why I didn't actually put a price on here, because like you said, the inflation's been going up so fast that
It's horrible.
If I put a price on here today, hey, can we start putting money back here to, to purchase a ladder truck? By the time we got there, like, you know, it, it'll be way higher than, I'd be really looking bad because I put in the wrong number.
No, I mean, it's.
It just.
But I think you need to start, and honestly, we should start it ten years ago, but if we could set a fund for that. Is that a Tammy question? Okay, when I saw you writing up here, thank you. Sorry, Brandon, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to, I wanted to ask that question before I forgot.
Bert, I agree with you guys, uh, you and Brandon. I, uh, I think it's important that we start organizing some, some form of, of, uh, financial leverage for that ladder truck, I would do, I think that's very important. I, uh, you guys got my positive feedback on that.
The other, the other thing that, that I wanted to include on there that we need to start thinking about and I'm trying to be proactive in this, but our air packs and stuff are coming up due. I filled out a grant initially, got awarded partial to that grant to get it. And since then, they, they've cut all awardings for, they withdrew the award and then wanted you to reapply, but they wanted you to reapply with, for less money, a lot less money towards it. And with that grant, like even equipment and gear, uh, top notch was, I think, a hundred thousand. And then on a truck replacement, they were only allowing thirty five thousand of that grant money to go towards that, on that particular grant. So that being said, um, I think our air packs are within five. I think our air packs are, within five years, they're gonna be at, out of date. Right now, when I put together a quote to replace the air packs, that came in at a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. That was to replace for twelve, I wanna say, twelve air packs. That ain't even replacing them all, that's just a good start. Also, when we was redoing the station, we sent off our SCBA compressor, their compressor, for it to be overhauled and looked at. And with updating these air packs to be interoperable with the other departments in the county, we was wanting to jump up to forty-five hundred pound cylinder. And our compressor's rated to forty-five hundred pounds, I think it's five thousand. But the guy that did the maintenance and overhaul on it said, yeah, it's rated to that, but if you go, you may be able to fill your bottles, twelve bottles, you may be able to fill it one bottle. But it's on a operational standpoint, if you're having to do it a lot, there's, this compressor's not gonna last. So, I also did a quote on a new compressor and fuel station, and we'd have to have a new cascade system, which jumped it also to a hundred and two thousand, or just over a hundred and two thousand. And that was just a quote, and the guy quoted me high because of, for it being a grant. So, you know, we wouldn't have to have all that. I can't remember the exact price. We wouldn't have to have the fuel station. But for the new cylinders and the, for the cascade and the new compressor, I can't remember the exact number on that. I'd have to go back and relook at my quote. But that's just something else to keep in mind to, uh, replacement.
And Brandon, just, just to clarify for the public, when you say that the air packs are going to be out, out of date, that doesn't mean that there's just something new or better out there that you want. That means that they actually expired and no longer be used.
Yes. We have a, we have a expiration date on our, on our gear, it's ten years. We have expiration date on our air packs and I think it's fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen, but the cylinders as well.
And, and that covers the cylinders as well. So, and that's, you know, that's not even including the fact of having a hydrotest and everything else to keep up on that. It's just a matter of fact that it's NFPA puts standards on things and it's just like OSHA with construction and everything else. After so many years, they considered it expired.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that, but it's, it's not a choice that our department just wants the newest thing, it's actually-
Right. And right now, with the, the air cylinders we have are the twenty-seven hundreds, twenty-two hundreds. And they, they're fine, but with the forty-five hundred, you're getting more time on air for us to be able to enter a structure and be on air longer. And the cylinders with that, over time, they've also gotten smaller and lighter and more maneuverable. And like I said, a lot of departments in the county already use the forty-five hundred. And so, whenever we do host these classes, the fire ones, the fire twos, that new compressor would allow the interoperability for us to be able to, to utilize or refill other department's cylinders as they come into training. It also increases the interoperability to where if we happen to go to Kingfisher to help them with the big structure fire or vice versa, we're able to fill each other's bottles and, and utilize, because they're, they're all specific to, if you've got the twenty-seven, or the twenty-two fifties, you're not gonna fill a forty-five hundred pound cylinder. So, it just increases that inoperability aspect of it to where we're on the same level with everybody else. It, like you said, it's not trying to go to the bigger or better, because I think there is a fifty-three hundred out there too, or fifty-five. So, it's not even trying to go to the bigger, better thing. And there even, we're not even going to the smaller, smaller bottles. We're going to the medium sized ones just to help us out there. That, but that's something I did put on here was the fact, because I was thinking about that grant, but like I said, they, they retract it it. And then when they put it back out there for you to reply, they, or reapply, they cut a lot of the funding, they put a cap on it. So.
So, with that being said, talking about that, right now, we have, to go, we have a half cent going into emergency services, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, our EMS bill alone is around two hundred and twenty thousand. So, that leaves us about thirty thousand each year that it would build without us spending it. I mean, there's eight hundred, there's eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in there, in that particular pot of money, for emergency services in the capital. But if we use, you know, we've, we've, we've really gotta look at it and see where we can pull the money, I mean, and, and be fair with all of emergency services. But I just wanted you to be aware, two hundred and twenty thousand goes just for ambulance a year.
So, with that ambulance, we also own that building. Do we do any of the maintenance or anything like that?
Correct, yes. Like, when an air conditioner goes down or something, I mean, they do like day-to-day maintenance, but if there's something like we had to replace, I think we had to replace part of the air conditioning one here, that is on us, any of those big. But they do day-to-day maintenance, but if it comes down to something like that, then yes.
So, then it, everything just comes out of general fund for that?
Comes out of restricted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Tiffany, do you mind if I go back just a second? There's, I have on here, there was another project that I was looking into that I sent you.
Okay.
Something that I'd like the police department to have is, we, Aaron started it, and so I've kind of picked up afterwards is, there's a particular spot that is not utilized, and I've talked with Boney about this, and he was okay with it and everything like that. Down at the lagoons, there's a spot, that's a pretty nice area, there's a dip down, and then there's a wide open space. I'd like to have, I'd like to start thinking about putting in a range there for officers only. I know when Aaron was the chief, I had called our insurance company and stuff like that, and they said there's no extra, you know, as long as officers alone use it, there's no extra charge, there's nothing like that. We were looking into building a berm, which is, I mean, it's rock or soil or whatever. We got specific like specifications and stuff like that we'd have to have. And the reason behind it is because we have been kind of doing our qualifications, which we try to do, we try to do two years and stuff like that. But the reason why I feel like it's important is because every time we do any firearms training or anything like that, we have to go to Kingfisher or E-N-D. And so, there's not really, I mean, we, we kind of don't do as much as maybe I would hope to do because of distance. I mean, and then also too, that allows like the on-duty officer to participate in training as well. And I don't, and whenever I did, when we were doing this, it, I mean, that's area like I talked to Boney about, and it's like, it's already getting mowed, it's already getting maintenance. And honestly, it's a one-time expense that, you know, putting up the berm and then you're done. And it's, I mean, I just figured it's not super expensive and it's something that we would utilize annually or pretty often. And so, just, what are your thoughts on that? And if that was something that we would entertain or?
Or if that's something we could talk to Mike about, maybe getting some help from the county with them doing the work right there close by anyway. And with Mike's support for law enforcement, I, I doubt that would be much of a issue.
And we have like piles of dirt sitting there.
We have dirt that we got from the Mitchell Road ditch that is at the lagoon that we could build a berm out of.
So, basically, we just need some help with the equipment and moving, moving some dirt around.
And that, you know, and that's just, and that's, I, I did put that on there too, that if we decided that, if you guys decided that was all right, something like that, that I was gonna talk with Mike about that. It has to be fourteen feet high, but doesn't have to be. It's, the NRA recommends, so that's what I'm gonna deal with. Fourteen feet high and four foot thick. And, and, you know, if you put regular soil, I mean, you're starting to get like, you'll start getting grass and stuff and deep roots that coming in and stuff like that. And that'll be, that'd be perfect. And, and they, and that's, I just wanted to start there. That, that's true, that's why I wanted to start there. And then maybe later on, if, you know, later on, try to maybe do some things to make it better later on. But I want to try this now, because we don't have, like I said, you know, the Kingfisher, that's it.
What kind of distance are you looking at?
Um, we're looking, what was it, seventy-five, seventy-five yards, I think is what it goes up to. So, which is perfect for a rifle. We usually start at seventy-five yard for a rifle, rifle shotgun and stuff. But pistol is twenty-five in. And we measured it, when Aaron was in chief, we went out there with Boney and we measured everything now and did all that and everything was fine. It's, and it's not gonna be like a noise nuisance either, because it's, it's way far out there. Technically, that's part of the county at that point. And, I mean, Aaron even talked to the farmer on the other side, and the farmer's like, I don't, I barely ever have cattle here and it's not gonna scare them and stuff like that. So, I mean, he went pretty business. It's like I said, I failed to mention it because, I mean, Aaron had started the project on this completely. And I was like, well, maybe I should reintroduce this. So.
I think it's a great idea. I don't think you guys should have to travel in order just to do your training and, and-
Where it would be located at is the central looms, the big central loom, it would be west of there down below the dyke. So, we're actually down below.
So, the fourteen foot would be easily achievable?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And like, I just, I don't know if you guys, like, I just, this is, that's like a rough deal. Like, these are like the little, the little loom spots. This is where that range is at, right here.
Oh, okay.
For you guys. And so, and like, I, I was being mindful, and that's why I asked you on the first, I said, hey, is this something that you're okay with? And he's like, I already have the mow there, I already have the maintenance. So, in my opinion, if the town owns the space and we're not utilizing it, why? You know, let's utilize it. At least, I'm definitely gonna utilize that. So.
I think it's a great idea.
So, that is the EMS. How much we pay the EMS, the, for EMS, the, the streets, we don't do anything in actual streets, but the street improvement is where we would have an overlay or anything like that. I know I'm gonna get with Alyssa and we're gonna start figuring out some streets, because we really do need to do, schedule an overlay. We just, we, we've gotta see how much we're gonna be required on the Mitchell, Mitchell Road project first, because we do have to have that done within a year. So, but right now, we're sitting at a street improvement, we have three hundred and thirty-three thousand as of end of March in that street improvement. The parks, what did the cap out like for the parks? Was there anything that we didn't need to know? There was something, but I don't remember what. So, we will need, we're, we're kind of limited on our vehicles in, in the Public Works Department employees. We need some newer ones. Right now, we're running a ninety-six French, red Chevy pickup, Chevy? Chevy pickup that we bought from Pioneer many minutes ago. And then we're running a two thousand, less than one ton. We have a two thousand- Okay, the two thousand three that we bought from the state surplus. And then we got two, or we got one two thousand eight, the other one is down the hill getting ready to be auctioned off. And then we've got a twenty-one and then a twenty-two. So, but right now, we're, we need to start looking at adding, adding one or two. Boney's is a two thousand eleven F-150, that was a conversion CNG slash fuel. And, and we've had nothing for problems with that. And then his center stays on all the time because the conversion is, is filling it correctly, or something with the conversion kit. But we just ran fuel only and, so, that's a free to get to start looking at getting vehicle prices. I've been watching, they've, I was told that they're gonna come down some, but they're really, they're not. They're looking at probably around forty-five thousand dollars, whereas our last pickup, we spent twenty-eight two thousand.
Ninety-sevens still running, five more ninety-sevens.
So, I think this, we're looking at in the H-2A buying one and downside buying one.
Are we gonna stick with half tons? Is there the use for maybe a smaller pickup? Like, I don't know what they call the Ranger, the Colorado Chevrolet side, is something like that, useful?
I think we're need to, I don't know that that would, I mean, we're hauling trailers around, you've got equipment in the back end. So, I'm thinking, I mean, that would be an Alyssa question, but I'm thinking a half ton would probably be where we would really at least get it out.
And I'm gonna, I'm not sure price-wise, you're much different.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I haven't checked the prices on them.
Yeah.
I know another thing that I've been contemplating, but haven't actually decided yet, is maybe buying, they have some, on sale, some small little SUVs for when people go to schoolings, because we're paying mileage. And right now, mileage rate is seventy, seventy cents a mile. So, you get somebody who goes, if they don't take a city vehicle, get somebody that goes to the city and comes back, that's like a hundred and fifty dollars. Or if we're taking our trucks to the city, that's spending a whole lot of fuel going to the city and back. So, it's just something that I've been thinking. I, I don't, I don't put in money for me personally for mileage. I, to me, that's money, my gift to the town. I don't expect any of that, which is how I, I believe. So, it's not mine, it would be other, other ones. Swimming pool, this is where our, our loan payment, I've got a, right now, if you link into the, as of March very first, we have a million dollars in there. As soon as we can pay that off, I will, we have a, you know, a place where we didn't get penalized to pay it off. We still have like two years. But I do believe that we will be right there to be able to pay that off as soon as we can. So.
I'm sorry, how much did you say we have in there?
A million dollars. Now, some of that, we're gonna use some of that to repaint the pool.
Right, correct. It's about sixty-five thousand. There's about sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, so. But we should have plenty as soon as we're able to, I think it's in a couple of years, uh, 'cause it was like seven years, eight years. We'll be able to pay it off. I, I believe there'll be enough money in there to pay it off with the way things are going, so it'll be an early payoff.
Tiffany, I got a question for Bird actually. Bird, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm back on the ladder truck for a second, okay? I, I thought we had discussed it's some meeting several months back, I thought we had discussed talking about the, once the swimming pool is paid off, that we would ask our citizens to vote on that restricted sales tax to, to fund or partially fund the ladder truck. Am I right or wrong? Am I dreaming or?
I don't remember that.
You don't remember that? What about you Brad? Do you remember any of that?
I don't remember it being brought up.
Oh, okay.
I really don't remember it being brought up.
Well, I can't remember, I can't remember who brought it up, but that, the reason I'm bringing this up now is I, I thought that was a good idea. But, okay, thank you.
I think it's, I think it's maybe worth discussing for sure, but, um, that's, that's up to the people.
Yes, that money, I mean, and that's something when we go to pay that off, we need to have something for, for the, the people, because otherwise it'll just end.
Right, once it ends, it doesn't restart without much effort and more voting by the people.
So, I mean, we need to figure out what we're gonna do, you know, what we want the people to approve on that. I think that would be another work session to bring up all the ideas, uh, because there are, um, a whole lot of streets that needs to be done. And when you only get like fifty thousand dollars a year in that street fund, it, it takes many years to build up to be able to resurface any, any bit of, of street. But there's a whole lot of, you know, there's a whole lot of stuff out there that needs to be done.
Well, the street improvement fund was cut from what it originally was. It was cut in half because we'd asked the voters to, when we contracted with Life EMS, we asked the voters to reduce that and reallocate some of that money to emergency services. So, from the beginning, our street restricted sales tax was double what we're getting today.
Yeah.
So, it.
Interesting.
Yeah, so Tiffany's a hundred percent right, uh, what's it gonna cost to do that mile of Mitchell Road?
Oh, it's ungodly, but just a, a little section is, is a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I, I, am I thinking right, like six hundred thousand or, maybe it was more than that? I don't remember. I shouldn't be throwing numbers out, 'cause I'm, I'm kind of a, I'm one of, but anyway, it, when you're taking in fifty thousand dollars a year, you can barely fill potholes with that little resurface.
Yeah, that barely covers inflation.
Yeah.
Understand. Maybe it was, maybe it was Cliff that brought that up on the swimming pool. I can't, I can't remember.
But maybe that's something we look at and all the different and take that, 'cause one cent is going to the pool. We pulled half a percent from, um, emergency services and then we created another half cent, so it gave a whole cent to the swimming pool. And when we pay that off, maybe we can shift it to where maybe a half cent goes back to, you know, emergency services and then a half cent goes to, you know, streets. We can kinda look at it and see what the needs are and then figure it out from there. But that would be something we can look at and, uh. You guys all overwhelmed yet?
No, I think, personally, I think this has been very helpful. I, I'd recommend doing this every year and.
Especially for me.
Appreciate the, the way you presented it, it's.
General government, um, I know this past year we've been at fifty thousand, that's to help with, I mean, it was to help with, I mean, that pavilion expenses that we needed to do. I know he's really trying to, um, he's really trying to raise money for the concrete and applying for grants and stuff like that. So, I really wanna see what we can do to help get that concrete in place with the pavilion so we can start utilizing that area. Tourism, that right there, um, the advertising is gonna be your, um, Discover Hennessy project. That's like thirty, that's like close to forty thousand a year. Ten thousand is for the, uh, artworks that we do and then other capital outlay. Oh, that was for the signs, but we're done with the signs, so we won't have any more of that, so. But anyway, that's where that tourism money, that's, and that's from the hotel tax. And right now, we're sitting in the hotel tax, um, right at eighty-four thousand, eighty-five thousand.
Is the hotel tax, is that restricted as well?
Yes, it can only be used, I mean, there's certain items that it can be used for, um, anything to bring in tourism, um, advertising for our hotels. I mean, just trying to get people to come to town.
Okay, is that what we use, um, for, like, portage on facilities, stuff like that whenever we do events? Or is that come out of general as well?
It comes out of general.
Okay. So it can only be used for advertising tourism?
Yeah, mine can be used for that, I mean, I don't, it, it, it probably could. It can't be used for any kind of brick and mortar.
Okay.
Is what I was told, so like if you wanted to build a pavilion in the park, it couldn't be used for that for a brick and mortar, but other than that, it could be used. So, we could possibly use that money for, I just figure we're, we're gaining a lot out of the Discover Hennessy project. I mean, Hennessy has been put out there and put out there and put out there and I think we're getting recognition for a lot of stuff we're doing with that project. And right now, um, our hotel tax, you know, the past couple of years dwindled down and so it wasn't even fulfilling that project. So it kind of is, it's been going down, but I would like to.
No, that's fine. I was just, I was just wondering what, what all that was used for outside of the, just the Discover Hennessy. So, okay, thank you.
Um, the library, um, do you have any capital?
No.
The library is something that eventually we're gonna have to get down to the nuts and bolts in that library, because that library is, um, it needs work. It either needs work or we need to figure out what we're gonna do, because, um.
Good stuff it is. Give some emergency access.
Yes.
Who knows what all it is.
I mean, there's, there is a lot of work that needs to be done with the library. Uh, I know it's just, it, some places. I mean, the carpet was one, but we had some carpet cleaners came in and they were able to do miraculous work with the carpets there. But it's kind of a boring, I mean, it's just, it needs, it needs a lot of work, some TLC. But I feel like the board needs to make that decision, but what they wanna do, are we gonna, you know, fix up an old building? Or we wanna put money into finding another whole library? That's, to me, that's what the board needs to decide. And these are just my thoughts. The board can tell us what we need to do with it, just my thoughts. Street Nally, so now we're in, we went through all the capital outlay, um, you'll notice there wasn't water and sewer. Water and sewer pretty much is paid for with utility money. So any capital projects they have would come out of the money people pay their water bills with. So we'll get to that when we get to the Hennessy utilities authority. And the street Nally fund, we talked about that. I have that nineteen thousand in electric utility. We try to use as much as we can to, to street lights, but then of course the general fund has to pay the rest. 'Cause we only get in around twenty-one thousand dollars a year with that, with our gas expenses. Rule fire, um, we don't have anything going out of that. That would be a place that if we do fire runs, the ten percent from the fire run would go into this account. It just kind of builds it up, um, slowly, but it would be used for any type of equipment or anything that they, they would need. Cemetery care, this right here is the cemetery, what they call perpetual fund, twelve and a half cents of all the lots that was going into this. This right here is what we would use for a long war that would be dedicated for the cemetery. Or we, when we did the bathroom of the cemetery, we, we took it out of this one, because it is, I mean, whatever you spend it to has to be only cemetery. When we expanded the land and we did, you know, the fencing and things like that, we use this money. We are gonna have to let it kind of build up so that we can get ready to start sectioning off the new section. I know they're gonna do ground work and stuff like that, if they have an party, but I think the rain has really, you know, hammered, 'cause I know he's ready to go start on it. But once they get that all, the ground work and stuff, then we'll start looking at, get that survey to get it sectioned off with what we propose.
It'd be pretty good expenditure just to plant grass.
Yes.
And get, get that going.
Um, my idea is that, I mean, in, that we're gonna sell as much as we can in the old section at three hundred dollars a plot. I think when we go to the new section, we start selling that, I think we need to go along. Because it takes a lot of money to expand your cemetery and people are gonna want up close to the road. And so we may still have some, you know, spots here and there in the old section, but I think, I, just my opinion, it'd come and just cost us to open this new section that we need to open our, to be able to plan through the future, because we have to expand again.
Tiffany, how much money do we have in the perpetual fund right now?
As of the end of, 'cause this would be, it says through today, but this would be through the end of April. Um, we have, in the cemetery, we have twenty-two thousand, three twenty-seven seventy-six.
Thank you.
Tiffany, um, you mentioned mowers and things that are strictly used for the cemetery and paid out of that, correct? Are any of the wages and salaries for mowing, uh, do you take any of that out of there?
No, um, that's general fund, because we do get ninety, or eighty-seven and a half, eighty-seven and a half percent goes to the general fund.
Okay.
To cover for the, the. And that's done by state statute.
Yes.
The percentages.
Yes.
Then there's the library fund, so the library, um, salaries and building and stuff that is maintained with us through the general fund. And then the state aid money, he gets once a year is around. Three thousands and then he has his book finds and, and things like that that goes into the actual library fund. And that's where he pays for his new books, any type of, um, summer activity that they do comes out of that, uh, different things like that. But that's the library fund. His library board kinda oversees the expenditures and stuff at the library fund, um, as, as well as the town, but they, they help him with that too. He also has friends in the library, which is totally separate of the town. It's kinda like, um, the world, the firefighters have their fundraiser money. This is library, friends in the library is kinda like a fundraiser fund, um, so, so just so you're aware of all the different things.
The county of course too.
And then he has county money too, so. So the library, I mean, big expenditures for the library would be just your salaries for the two people and utilities, so. That's why you see this library fund of only ten thousand dollars, um, worth of things. And he brings in, he shows that he brings in that amount, um, and expenditures out, he only spends what he brings into the library, so. Juvenile funds, um, this expenditure, like I said, it's for tickets, um, we don't have very many of these, maybe like three a year. But a lot of times we'll do the dare, um, the dare stuff for the school or, um, if they need stickers to hand out to the kiddos. Sometimes they've done suckers, say no to drugs, um, just different things like that is what we use that money for. And that's set by state statute too, on what you can use that, you can all time, right?
Mainly if I use it for dare stuff, like prizes for the kids and stuff like that, it really means some pay attention and kind of get concepts.
We don't have a CDCG grant, so that one we won't utilize this year. Now we're gonna get to the utilities authority. Does anybody need a break before we get into the utilities authority?
Do what?
Need a break before we get to utilities?
Should we adjourn this? Should we adjourn this meeting to start the utility?
Oh, yes, that's right, yes. Sorry, you're, you're staying on top of me.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
This one will be my sponsor, it doesn't have a.
Are you in white camp? Camp takes me, it's that Charlie wants to cancel me yet, but I don't know, I, I, I just nearly have to say sure that I'm nation. They have it for, their other family members like Esther?
You know, she's, she's local, you know, she's.
I mean, I would think.
I would think so, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's been a shock for sure, but. Yeah, I'm like, do you like? We don't wanna hear this. This, this is beyond interesting to me and it's gonna make later on, well, next month, actually, we're gonna vote on this.
It'll make it make a lot more sense.
This is time.
This is really helping.
I tell you what. I've been over there a long time, I've learned stuff this morning that.
You didn't know? I think, I think Tiffany's doing a good job with it. I'm glad she's doing this.
On that, on that wages and stuff, great too. There's general salaries that we send up there too, that, I know.
Tiffany, do I need to go to any kind of training for open meetings?
Yes.
What, when's timeline on that?
Um, that meeting.
The line items. The line items are different.
Exactly.
They're pulling out of our salaries, just a, just a limited, have different line item. 'Cause I'm not too sure if you were close on our salary on our, my line item.
There's one June fifth, it's a Thursday.
Is it a one day thing?
Yes.
Where will it be? Oakland City?
Midwest City.
Midwest City.
Do you wanna do that one? 'Cause the next one.
See you.
Tell you the.
I'll be there, I'll just be late. I'll text you if something comes up and I won't be there, I'll, I'll let you know if something changes. Cause he's, he's notoriously, he's supposed to be in there between 5:30 and 6:00. Last time he says that, he showed up about 7:45, so.
Is in Tulsa, July 17th. Or there's Woodward, October 16th.
July 17th?
Uh huh.
And October 16th?
Yes.
And the first one was in Tulsa, 17th?
Yes.
And the 16th is in Woodward?
Yes. Or Janu, if you waited till Janu, where you could go still water. You just have to have it done within a year. But I will tell you, the sooner you can go, the better.
I'll see how that office and Carol's calendar.
You let me know and then I'll get just signed up.
Okay. Yeah, that June 5th one might be kind of hard to go to.
That's why I was like, let's get right there in harvest.
You won't be done anything, will you?
You know, we might not be cutting week, by the way. If, if we're not cutting week, how long?
I mean, we could do it.
Can you show up?
Yeah, you could.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Yeah, if we're not starting with harvest, I'll try to get out of the way then.
Okay. I'll, I'll make, I'll call up there and make sure. Cause we've done that before, we weren't sure, and we didn't wanna register and not show up, cause then you get, if you don't cancel by a certain time, then you have to pay.
Pay that fee anyway, right? Yeah, I'll, I'll keep that one in mind if we're not harvest.
Yeah, it's at Rose College, Rose State, right there, in Midwest City, right off I-40.
Yeah, right to right.
Hutterburg Drive.
My tanker, yeah.
Yep.
Tiffany, when I first got elected, I declined my pay. Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
Do I need to redo that, being, we just had an election, or is the form still valid, P5s?
Um. Maybe so. Oh, and the board member does get paid $75.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
So I do need to give you some paperwork. For a direct deposit. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I might do, there we go.
Back in the day, they would pay the individuals a lot of that.
Yeah, I've heard rumors about that. St. Bert told me about that.
They found that that was not legal.
Don't break in.
So.
Jack will be on you.
I'll, I'll stop by sometime.
Okay, sounds good. Are we ready?
I'm ready. Are you ready?
I, I was born.
Katie, Katie, Katie ready?
I'm ready to get to work. Have a busy day.
There's something, we never heard Katie say.
We're switching our payroll system to pay com?
I got a contact for you if you ever need any help.
It's just been Zoom meeting, I mean, interview meeting, I was on there for two hours with the history.
Ready?
Yep.
All right, Wednesday, May 21st, Special Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, special meeting, call the order and roll call, please.
David?
Here.
Harold? Randy?
Here.
Here.
John?
I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, technically, both are John.
All right. Two point one discussion, work session for fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget.
So as the general, general fund had, you know, all the departments, the Hennessy Utilities Authority, which is, you get money, Hennessy Utilities Authority gets money for water ser, water services, sewer services, garbage services, and the transfer, the dump. Those are the, the sources of income for the Hennessy Utilities Authority. So in those departments, we have administration, which I talked about, in here, the administration, we took half from, you know, half goes to the Utilities Authority, half goes to general government, and we put all those salaries under administration. So that's what that is. Public works, this is the one that we created, we took all of the water in the sewer, and the streets, and the parks, and cemetery workers, and we, even the transfers dump, and we put them all into one, and then we divided them amongst the two. General fund and Hennessy Utilities Authority. So that's where the salaries are for that. Sanitation, this right here is where you will find your contractual services, which is our contract with B&amp;B Services, or Waste Connections for our dumpsters, $350,000. Right now, we charge dumpsters and poly carts, what they charge us, plus I think it's like 10%, is what we pay, what we charge the customer on top of what they bill us. Yes.
Tiffany, where, where is the roll offs charged out of the, for the transfer station?
They're down here in this contractual services.
Do you know how much we're spending just, so, now, when you're saying that, what we pay, what's it even called now?
Waste connections.
What we pay them to do our in-town pickup, that money is from the transfer stations lumped into that for the dumpsters.
What we pay out, or what we get?
No, what we pay out.
What we pay out, yes, it's all under contractual services.
So that includes the roll offs?
Correct.
You don't want the, here's where I'm going with this.
It depends, it depends on how busy we are. Some months we may, cause we, the county pays half.
Correct.
And we pay half of the roll off services for the dump. They bill the county half, they bill us half. So any, sometimes it may be as low as $1,000, sometimes it may, for us, and sometimes it may be as high as $2,500 a month.
What I'm, what I'm really digging for here is how much are we spending on a transfer station as opposed to what we're taking in? Do you have that? And I, I don't need that answer this minute, if, but I just, every year we struggle because we have so much money going out down there that.
I can get that, I will tell you, now that we've got, um, let's see if I can get here to make it. Um, now that we've got, Kevin working down there.
Who?
Kevin. He is our, he works the dump for us on Friday and Saturdays, what's his last name?
Kevin, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Anyway, he's Kimberly, Kimberly, he's Melissa Darrow's husband.
Oh, okay.
But he works the dump, and we seem to be doing really good at the dump.
Okay.
Like, collecting wise.
Okay.
It went up. I think that's because we have one person there instead of multiple, and so it's very consistent compared to what it was. But if you look at, just through the end of April, we collected more than what we had collected the previous two years. And we still have two months, and May and June are busy months. So he's, he seems to be collecting a lot more than what we. Mike Sparks did talk to me about sta, opening up on Sundays. And that they would pay for all the expenditures for us to open up on Sundays. Cause he would like, cause the county is getting a lot of illegal dumping, and so that they would like for us to open up another day, and they said that they would cover all the expenditures to open up that part of day. So I think we've talked about opening up on Sundays from one to four. Just to give people who work till sundown on Saturday to get it to the dump Sunday afternoon. So. So he would pay the, the wages for those three hours. Then water, pretty much self-explanatory, anything that goes with our water system is under, any parts, any pipe, anything like that is under utility system parts. Anything like, as far as maintenance-wise with that, such as when they come and work on our water plant or anything like that, it's under utility system maintenance. Those are a couple of categories that are new to, to the Hennessy Utilities Authority side. Other capital outlay, we did put in there 250,000, but that is to cover the AMR upgrade? The AMR upgrade that we will be finishing up in the next fiscal year, as well as we're hoping to get the water, new water, bulk water station done, but if not, then that'll have to be put in there, too. But with that, I mean, if we put that in there, then the grant money that we're gonna receive from that can help raise up the revenue also. And then when we get down, and then the principal payments, we have a loan, we still have a loan through, through Bank First, or they're the, it's through Oklahoma Water Resources Board, but it's, it goes through Bank First. And that right there is for our water loan that we got for, um. Which one was that?
Was that when we repaired the, the RO?
The RO, yes, when we rebuilt the RO. Yes. And then we've got a loan for our sewer system, which was part of upgrading our lagoons. So right now, we have three, the town has three, three nodes, ones for the swimming pool, ones for the sewer system, and ones for the water system. And then the sewer, pretty self-explanatory. One of the things, utility system maintenance, we do have a guy that comes out once, once a month and puts stuff into our lagoons to help keep the sludge down. And it's a chemical that he puts in, it's like $1,700 a month. But we have seen great results from him contracting with them to come and do that. We don't have to build up the sludge that we used to have, so. Trying to maintain those lagoons so we don't have to build more. And big spend out, a whole lot of money. And then as far as the capital outlay, capital outlay, we did put in a new pickup truck for that one, so that one's in that capital outlay.
To refurbish the lift station with the rig grant, are we including that?
Yes. To refurbish the, the lift station, and we've applied for a grant for that, so.
That's a lagoon.
And one thing that we do need to consider doing is a, a generator for
What was the one you wanted?
The lift station, too.
Yes.
Backup generator?
Yeah.
What size? What size backup generator? Would it be like a?
Sure what he's putting in, we just put one in last year at the Northland Station behind Seaboard. That way, if we lose power, at least it'll still run. Cause we'll have to put one in. This year, I'd like to do the lagoon, and then the following fiscal year is put one up, uh, Casey's. But Casey's, I think we could tie into a natural gas line there.
Should be able to.
The ones at the lagoon and the one behind Seaboard, we had appropriated tanks in.
But those are just some of the, you know, emergency things that we need to, we need to look at.
Do we still have the, the backup generator that was removed from the fire station?
It's at the storm shelter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we put it at, we put it at the storm shelter in case we lose power during the tornado or where they're utilizing the storm shelter. And then general government is pretty much a catch-all, with all of the insurance and the accounting fees. Also has hefty postage because we do pay, for our water bills, we do pay, water sewer bills, we do pay postage, about $1,200 a month, so.
So I know a lot of places have given incentives for going paperless. Is that something that we've looked at or considered to save us on that postage? Because like for myself, I'm on auto pay, we just received an email or something like that, to me would be just as easy.
Yes, we have some people who want it emailed and mailed. So we can't differentiate, I mean, that would be something that we would have to, I mean, cause right now, if we have your email, we email it to you and we mail it to you. Because we have some people who want both. Well, you either have to have, either you don't email it to the people, or you email it and then you only send to the ones who don't have email, or you email and mail, like you can't differentiate. So we would have to limit the customers either email or mail.
I wouldn't agree with that, something our system could do for us to kind of build that setup.
We could talk to them.
Okay.
Cause we ask for enhancements once a year, so we could do that.
Cause I, I was, I know, you know, lots of places who really, really wish you need to go paperless.
Oh, yeah.
For me, the less things I get in my mailbox a, a day is better, but.
Oh, the banks now do a mail statement fee.
Okay, great. Something else I'll look into as well.
Yeah.
Cause I know I receive one every month, I don't even look at it, it just gets thrown away because it's on auto pay.
Oh, yeah, I take my water bill from my mailbox or it's the trash can. I mean.
Rebel cars. We may be the minority on that, but I'm just thinking that, you know, if we could save on that postage, $1,200 a month, that's, that's a lot.
Cause we mail out 12, around 1270 bills. And when we don't create the file with all of them, it's about 900. So there's about 300, over 300 that get emailed out. So I'm gonna do, um, to look where the Utilities Authority is with all of those expenditures. And right now, we show revenues higher by about $40,000 than expenditures with what we went through today.
N H U A?
N H U A.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Yes. The managers have really worked hard in trying to. I gave them their papers and they went and they studied and they went through and they were asking Bobby, well, what did I spend in this category? So they're really trying to, to work hard at it this year.
That's great.
Because they're the ones who are having to, when they want money, they better figure out where they've got money and what pocket can they spend, so.
Great job.
I will finish this up, the final draft for you guys. I will finish this up, the final draft for you guys, out of the middle of next week. And then I'll stick it out as well as our budget hearing goes. So at our next meeting on July, June, or June, already, on June tenth, we'll have our budget hearing. I think the tenth was going to be, we talked about maybe.
I will be here.
Yes. So because of when, we have till the fifteenth to get our budget approved, I didn't know if, and this is not on the agenda, so I was going to contact each of you to see if we can move the agenda out just a little bit to get us ready for, to post the public notice and get people here. Because either that or we'll have a special meeting.
Okay.
One other thing that I was. Oh, no, not tomorrow, Friday morning. We're doing breakfast.
We decided to move it Friday morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Friday morning, David is retiring next, next week, next Friday is his last day. So we are going to do a breakfast again Friday morning, since it's a half day. Figured before I leave town for my vacation, we're going to do breakfast for David out at the street shop, I think. Or we're going to do it here?
Here.
Here. We're going to do it here. We're going to make up some breakfast. So you guys have worked a lot on this stuff, Brian. Thank David for his nearly twenty years of service. And wishing, wishing well on, on retirement. So.
He's done a great job.
Yes, he has.
He has. He's done a lot. And he's one person, and we're having to use many people to fill all the issues. Because he was our building inspector, our flood plan administrator. He was, he did parks, swimming pool for a long time. He did cemetery. I mean, he's done a lot. So.
He's, he's seen all aspects.
He has. He worked the water department. He, you know, when I, I resigned the first time, he sat in as town administrator. So he's, he's done a lot in, in the municipality. He's devoted a lot of time and effort for the, for the town. And I really appreciate him.
For sure, absolutely. Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't hear which one of you, just kind of a tie.
Shut down John, it'll be fine.
Randy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.